Call the Tuesday, May ninth, 2023 Alexander County Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I would like to recognize, as far as I know, we have one student for me, Peyton Sykes. I hope I said that name right. If I didn't, correct me. Mr. Huffman, is there any, is there any other students or is just Peyton? If Peyton would, I'm gonna ask her to come up and lead us in our pledge. You will just stand right over there and that way they might get you.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, Board Member Reese, second Board Member Agüez. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approval of agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, agenda is approved. This time, I'll turn the agenda over to Dr. Hefner for our honors and recognitions portion.
Thank you Chairman Robinson, Vice Chairman Agüez, and board members. I want to say a special welcome to the audience. I love it when we have a full room like this and when the room is full because of honors and recognitions. We've had a full room before, but I like it on a positive note. So I would ask that board members, Reese and Bowman, please come up and help me with the honors and recognitions tonight. On April eighteenth through the twentieth, several ACHS students and staff traveled to the Greensboro Coliseum to compete in Skills USA contest. The motto of Skills USA is preparing for leadership in the world of work, and this organization gives students opportunities to practice technical, professional skills that they learn in their CTE classes. ACHS students competed this year in carpentry, drafting, electrical construction wiring, firefighting, first aid and CPR, information technology services, medical terminology, television and video production, and lastly welding. We are so proud of the students and the advisors, and at this time, if we have advisors in the audience, please stand when I call your name. Mr. Josh Bowles, Mr. Roy Hadley, Mr. Ashley Deal, Mrs. Kristen Jolly, and Mrs. Heather Mull. Kristen, thank you so much for being here. Without these advisors, our students would not be able to compete in this state competition. I also want to thank Chairman Raimi Robinson from CBCC. He served as the advisor for our CCP, electrical, and welding students. Thank you Chairman Robinson. And now to the fun part, recognizing students. We are very proud to announce that we have a first place state winner from the Skills USA competition. I want to say congratulations to Isaac Malk for bringing home the gold in information technology services. Is Isaac here tonight? Woo-hoo, did I say? Isaac, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
It's Malk, but it was pretty good.
Malk. Let me do a do-over. Isaac Malk. Isaac now qualifies to compete at the national competition in Atlanta in June. Let's give him a round of applause. Good luck to you in June. We are going to be cheering you on from Alexander County. We also had a variety of other students who were recognized as meddling in the state competition. In the area of carpentry, we took third, fourth, and fifth place. In third place, Bentley Gilbert. Fourth place, Heath Bentley. Fifth place, Harley Grogan. Congratulations. Great job guys. Another round of applause. Sorry Angela. In the area of electrical construction wiring, we took second and fifth place. Second place goes to Canyon Efford, and fifth place to Jesse Anderson. In first aid and CPR, fifth place goes to Emily Mull. In television and video production, we will recognize two students. They worked together. In third place, Grant Sizemore and Emma Cooley. In welding, we had someone in fourth place. Please come forward, Devin McCall. Mr. Lewis, the students who were not here, do you mind to take their certificates to them? Wonderful. And again, we just congratulate all of these students and their CTE teachers and advisors. Great job. Vice Chairman Agüez, will you come help us with the next awards? Congratulations are definitely in order for Ellendale Elementary's acceleration program. They have been very successful this year with their boxcar derby race. The race was held on April thirtieth at Lenore's Google Gravity Games. This was Ellendale's first time competing, and they came home with second and third place. And for a first time competition, that is wonderful. There were twenty-four students that helped with the process of building the cars, and sixteen of those students were able to attend the race. We are going to recognize two of the students tonight. They are the student drivers. John Henry Herman placed second, and driver Paisley Tig placed third out of sixteen racers. Okay, now I know that they'll want you lined up here. But John and Paisley, I want, I want you to hear this. I followed this on Facebook, and as I was watching your videos of you running at the time that you were racing, I was yelling for you. You all had already won. I was so excited. And listen, somebody taught you something about aerodynamics, because I saw you crouch down so that you would have faster speed and there would be less resistance. And just know that on Facebook after the fact, I was also cheering you on. So let's get your picture. Now stay up here, because we're gonna have a group to come up and join you. We had teachers Monica Anderson, Macy Eisenhower, Chase Ivosik, and Katie Steele. They were a big part in this process, and they actually began the challenge using YouTube videos to guide the students through building these cars. Wow, wow, give them a round of applause. Well, listen, I have others. We'll just hang off on, on the picture, okay? And I have a funny about a YouTube video. All I've ever done was replace a part on my dishwasher from watching a YouTube video, and here you all are building cars. Okay, School Board Vice Chair, Mr. Robert Agüez, School Resource Officer Buddy McKinney, and local business owner Brandon Cox devoted hours of their time and expertise to our students to guide them through making the cars, and I would ask that they come up, please. Okay, good. Mr. McKinney's here. Also, Robert Herman and Cory Eisenhower helped a lot in getting the cars ready to compete. So please come forward. And lastly, Inline Designs donated the wrap jobs done for both cars, and they were beautiful. So a team effort as always. Give it up for this wonderful team. Stay there. You have to like each other. And who figured out that the steering column had been put in backwards? Well, give it up, because if the steering wheel had been put in the wrong, odds are we would not have taken second and third places.
Actually, when we were doing it, one did.
Oh, a student. Who was it?
Lane Buggawner.
Oh, my word. Well, we really need to give it up for Lane. A job well done, and like I said, I loved watching the videos and looking at the pictures on Facebook. Thank you all so very much.
We'd like to commend all y'all on a job well done representing our school system. It was a pleasure to actually get to see all these students, whether it was Skills USA or the Gravity Games in Lenore in person, and they represented our system well. And thank y'all for coming out with your families for the recognition tonight. If there's anyone that wishes to step out, we've reached a point in the program that if you choose to leave, you're welcome to leave. We'd like to have you stay. If you choose to leave, there's no hard feelings.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna look at his, I'm gonna look at his UTV out there, see if the steering column's in green. That's his new excuse to get to take it.
My steering column's in backwards.
I didn't know it.
I'm doing the shelter.
I cleaned them out.
They all moved to the back road too.
All right, we have reached the public comment portion of the agenda. Do we have anyone sign up for public comment tonight? No one signed up for public comment. All right, board members, you have in front of you your consent agenda in your packet. What's the pleasure of the board for approval of consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion by Board Member Agüez, second Board Member Bowman. Is there any discussion? If not, the consent, uh, excuse me. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, consent agenda is approved. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Brett Huffman, our principal at East Alexander Middle School, for our update.
Good evening. Talk about a tough after Father. finishing in the state competitions and soapbox derby stuff, you know, now it's me. I'm, I'm very sorry. First, let me thank each of you for your willingness to serve on this board and make an impact in the lives of our students. Secondly, thank you to our great central office staff who continue to lead our district forward and provide excellent support for the students of our district. Since starting on December first as the principal at East Alexander Middle School, I've had a great opportunity to assess where we are and start making plans for where we are going. This has been a shared process. I value input and have had great conversations with staff as well as great mentoring from our district leadership. The first area targeted by our school improvement plan is an academic focus. We were able to take our professional learning communities and break them down from eight teachers into two teachers per subject area. This has allowed us to focus in a smaller group where our main target areas and deficiencies lie. Over the past few months, we have started a larger push for data-driven instruction. We continue to look at measurables and use this information to assist us in modifying our instruction to meet our students' needs. We are not to a point of fidelity, but have taken small steps to make this a fully implemented objective. Through professional development, including learning-focused schools curriculum, we have found success in making our instruction more effective. The second area targeted in our school improvement plan addresses student behavior. A SOAR matrix was introduced at the beginning of this school year so students had a visual reference of expectations. Teachers would teach the various expectations to students and could use and refer to them as need be within their classes. We have a reward system that goes hand in hand as well with PBIS rewards. Administration can also refer to it with students when having conversations with them. Our goal is for office referrals to go down so that our students are spending more time learning in their classroom. This chart shows a split of our educators handbook data. Educators handbook discipline data from last school year on the left and our current year on the right. As you can see, we have been able to reduce office referrals from four hundred and fourteen to two hundred and sixty-nine at present. ISS days from three hundred and six to two hundred and seven, and out of school suspensions from two hundred and seventy-three to a hundred and sixty-four. Our minor incidents are up, but we, we have done a great job this year having teachers being able to address minor concerns in their classroom and assign minor corrective measures. Our last focus area addresses parent and community involvement. I truly believe this is a crucial piece in building a positive school culture. Communication is vital in so many areas of life, especially in a school. We have implemented class dojo this year, which has shown outstanding results. My daughter, she's in fifth grade at the school that my wife teaches at. And usually in that case, you know, my wife handles all the stuff involving my daughter, you know. I, I focus on the school I'm at and my wife at hers, and yet she can have conversations with teachers quite regularly about my daughter's education. Never really paid much attention to dojo. Lately though, I have really enjoyed looking through and seeing the things that teachers are providing to me in the evenings. I'll tell you something that goes overlooked. It gives me some talking points sometime. How many of us have had this conversation? How'd school go today? Good? What'd you do? Stuff? Okay, that's correct. I'm able to ask her about dissecting frog, some different science things that she's done, and that really leads to a conversation between us rather than the same old, same old. So that has been very beneficial for our school implementing dojo and having that continued communication with our stakeholders. We have upped our presence on social media to show off awesome things happening in our school every day. Our staff has continued to make positive parent phone calls. I feel like these sometimes have been overlooked. Obviously, we make communication when we may need some help from parents with a student issue, but at the same time, receiving a positive phone call, hey, I just want to let you know, your students doing a great job right now. I feel that's very important for our stakeholders here, and sometimes maybe in the past, those things went overlooked. But we're definitely making that a point this year in addressing our community involvement. We also have a family connect group, which is led by a great parent representative, Ms. Absher, who has truly gone above and beyond to make our school a better experience for staff and students. Okay, in the upper left-hand corner here is our Real Money Real World. This was a program designed to help students gain a better understanding of finances for when they get into the real world. I asked them if they had a virtual course. I was gonna try to get my wife involved. Unfortunately, they said they didn't. I said, well, that's something we need to move forward with in the future. And I was hoping maybe they would learn how to write a check. I thought that might be good too. So they were able to do that, look, writing checks and stuff. So I'm still holding out for the virtual piece. I'm also gonna try to start up some sort of Amazon addiction support group to help us as well at the house. I mean, I'm tired of making Bezos' Ferrari payment every month.
Ms. Vice Chairman Agüez has offered his extra bedroom for UTV.
Can we take UTV outside?
Your wife is watching.
I told, I, I'd already told her it was coming. She understood. She understood. I made sure to cover my bases. But yeah, that was really neat for our students, you know, how often in a, in a world today of just simply plastic and everything else, to be able to visually see and budget. I thought that was an excellent experience for them. In the middle, we have started implementing clubs since February. Now, every student at our school is involved in, in a club, okay? And we have, gosh, art clubs, music clubs, just to name a few. We've got plenty of things for our students to get involved and plugged in with. And I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm a firm believer, students that get involved in something bigger than themselves, that's gonna, that's gonna show growth in our graduation rate. Arts, band course, academics, beta clubs, those types of things, athletics. I'm an old coach myself. Those are all big. When you get plugged into something, like I said, it's definitely gonna provide awesome opportunities and kids to stick in school. Absolutely. That's, during one of our clubs, we've got like a greenhouse there on the side of the school. We've actually spent a lot of time working in there, cleaning that out. We're gonna, we're gonna start growing things in there again. We've actually been able to partner with the high school as well. They're gonna be working on putting up some new panels for us that we purchased. We purchased some new tables, racks, the watering systems there, we're getting it hooked up. Heater getting hooked up. So yeah, we're gonna open that thing back up, and I'm very excited about kids getting able to, you know, get their hands on something there and learn more about agriculture, which of course, might be something they want to pursue there in the high school, which has an awesome CTE department. In the upper right, we had a steam night on April third and had a, had a good turnout. We wanted parents to get a glimpse of technology that we were putting in our students' hands today. We wanted them to be able to see some of these awesome features that the students are being able to utilize there in our classrooms. On the bottom left, one of our PBIS rewards that goes along with our SOAR matrix was black light dodgeball, which was really fun. I'm still having to ice my shoulder, but it was great. Kids really enjoyed it, and what an awesome time it was for them that had earned that reward. In the bottom on the middle, our sixth grade was studying Asian history and culture, and we were provided a snack from some of our community members at House of Foe, so that was really great. And in the bottom right, our Falcon Family Connection hooked us up with this awesome backdrop that we use in a variety of ways. One of our EC classes, they'll do their weekly news show in front of it, you know, telling us what's on the menu and the weather and stuff, and that's been awesome for them to be able to communicate. And what a great gift that was to our school, and we definitely appreciate it. Community partnerships can definitely help support schools and provide needed resources as well as great memorable experiences for our students. We are truly blessed by the following community supporters who have in one way or another supported us this year, and I probably left some off. We look forward to continuing working with them in the future to help us continue to provide great experiences for our young people within our school. And with that being said, I want to thank everyone so much for their support. If there's any questions, that's all.
Board members, any questions? Thank you for the job you're doing.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the job that you have done and continue to do at East. With you starting December the first, I know what it's like being a new administrator, walking into a community slash a school and being the new kid on the block. Just real briefly, what would you say maybe have been some of the biggest hurdles that you have encumbered so far, and how you've maybe overcome, overcome those?
I think anytime that you are stepping into a new situation, that communication aspect is key. Building relationships with not only our students has been paramount for me, being able to communicate with them, find out their interests, that way I've always got something to talk to them about.
Right.
Something to bring up that I can start a conversation with. Staff, same one. Like I said, it has to be imperative that in the building, you have to be open and be able to communicate with one another. That's kind of what I hearken back to on my academic piece where I talked about that shared vision, being able to communicate with one another, taking input, you know, putting all our heads together to do what's best for our students. You know, it truly takes all of us, you know, input, a little part here and there to put those pieces together to make something effective. So I really feel like those have been some things, trying to, trying to do that on an accelerated level has been difficult, but I feel like we're definitely making strides, yes sir.
How do you feel, you mentioned about the new behavior matrix. How, how has that went over as far as with staff and those kinds of things? Has that been, has that been going good?
I think it has, yes sir. I think one of the things they're able to do is have that reference and have it posted in all the rooms so that we're able to quickly address it rather than just, hey, don't forget you're supposed to do this. Hey, just a reminder right here, right? Supposed to be doing these things. So I think that's definitely helped us as far as our discipline and behaviors and, and also having the ability to sit down and talk with students about these behaviors. Sometimes they, they might not understand those differences, considering environmental factors and different things. That's why it's important for us not only to teach academics, but teach character ed is what really need to be able to do that.
Well, I want to speak personally that I appreciate the job that you are doing down there. If the Lord allows, in about two years, I will have a daughter going through East Alexander Middle, and I, I want nothing but the best for her and for our kids. And so I appreciate everything you do, Mr. Huffman.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you for the job you do. I was fortunate enough to be in your building. I saw him. He was working hard a few weeks ago. I told him I didn't even get to hardly talk. I told him I didn't even get to hardly talk to him. I could tell he was, they, they had him busy that year.
Yes, sir.
But we do appreciate the job you're doing.
I appreciate you.
And look forward to our visit down there, hopefully in the future, maybe before the end of school year.
It'll be wonderful. I welcome it.
And if there's anything we can do for you, just let us know.
And I appreciate every, every time, every time I see anybody, it's always a thank you. I appreciate that more than you know. I really do. That means a lot. It really does.
Good job.
At this time, I'll recognize Chris Campbell, our Director of Maintenance for our Old Whittenburg School property update.
Good evening, Chairman Robinson, Board members, Dr. Hefner. Just going to be a quick update on some of the stuff we have. I'm going to turn this up so y'all can hear me. No offense, Brett. But y'all had mentioned last month about getting back with some of the numbers and some of the information and doing a real estate assessment of the value, whether the property was torn down and removed or sold as is. I had trouble finding a real estate agent that would look at the building the way it is. All of the ones that I talked to said simply, it's going to be better off if you tear it down. This afternoon, I finally got in contact with one that's willing to come out and look at it tomorrow, and he said the exact same thing. He said, I'll come out and look at it, but in the condition it is, and I'm going to go over some of those numbers of why that is right now. So next, so this is the main property at Whittenburg. It's actually divided into two lots. The main property consists of seven point three four four acres. The actual building value is one point nine, one point zero nine million dollars. The land value is two hundred and thirty-four thousand or a total assessed value of one point three seven one million. The second one, property, is a small, small lot, which is one point five acres. The land value and the total assessed value of that is thirty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. The people that I talked to, the real estate agents that I talked to, said the building value, there's no way. These were our new county assessments there, and so that's not it. The next thing is, one of the people that when we listed it last time, shared with us their asbestos and lead results, from it, and I'm not going to go through all of you, just scroll up through this, it's a fifty-seven page document. And in that document, pretty much there is nothing in that building that does not contain lead. The walls contain lead paint, the pipes are asbestos, the flooring is asbestos, the ceiling tiles asbestos. It is the gym, which is a newer part of that building, the panels on the walls and everywhere else are, are asbestos. So it's, as you go on through, and at the end of this document is the, in two thousand eighteen, is the asbestos that we did in, that we had done right before I, I came here. There's some pictures of the property. The floor is caving in, the roof has fallen in, it has been vandalized. I did not post those pictures. Some of them are too vulgar, but it has become a, pretty much every two weeks, three weeks, filing a police report because people are busting windows out, breaking into the building, painting graffiti on the wall. Two, if you'll keep on going down. You, I just want to, I want them to see that at the very end is the, is that the very end? Go back up. Sorry, it might not attach all of it. It didn't attach all of it. That's it. I'll, I'll share the actual full document. I don't know what happened there. So some of the estimates that I got to abate the property, abate and renovate it, which means you'll, you'll go in, take it down to a shell, rebuild the inside the way it was, new sheet rock, new ceiling, new walls and everything. An estimate just to abate and do the lead removal in order to get it down to the shell to where you could rebuild and reuse the shell of the building was actually between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars to do that. I confirmed with somebody else that did the asbestos, and they said that was the rate that they got. The cost to reconstruct it back in afterwards at minimum is six hundred to seven hundred thousand. So if we were to sell that building. Sorry. Didn't answer it. If we could sell the building it to someone or whatever value is, they spend five hundred thousand dollar abating it and then have to spend six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars to rebuild the building. Cost to abate and demolish the existing structure, structure to go down to just bare ground, wipe it clean and sell the property, which is, is just short, both lots together are just short of nine acres, is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Pretty much a very quick update. I'm sorry I talked fast. But questions? That's the last one.
Are there any additional remediation costs that you would expect on the land itself due to some kind of EPA correction?
The, the.
Contaminants?
No, there should not be. The, the two hundred and twelve thousand dollars concludes abatement, because when they abate it and they tear it down, they can take it to certain places with it, and so they don't have to go through and completely, there, there's a different process involved. And so that should, that should put the land back just clear to be ready to sell. So that includes anything that's going to have to be environmental protection, anything that's done should be, it should be just simply putting a real estate sign up and doing whatever you want to with the property at that point.
So that'll include the removal of the old oil tank from the old boiler, I would assume also.
That includes removing.
And, and checking the soil around that tank.
That should, that should include everything. And the, the school system has a, we, we have a asbestos entity, I'm not, I can't, right now, I can't remember what you call them, but we have a person that comes out and checks all that, and they would have to be involved in that building. Since we own the building, it doesn't have to be asbestos inspected, because we don't have students in it, but they would be involved in that process.
In the demolition?
In the demolition process.
And you have not gotten an estimate on the value of the land after clearing?
Not yet. The guy, the, the gentleman tomorrow is going to call me in the morning to set up a timeline and do it. But everybody I talked to said that, for the most part, that it would be more valuable without that building on it, because no one wants to buy a building that they're going to have to invest one point two million dollars in to renovate when their tax assessment value of the building is one point three with the building and the land as it is. And it's a, I, I was, from a maintenance standpoint right now, it is becoming a maintenance nightmare for us, because we have to constantly go up there, fix windows, fix stuff where they're replacing it, fix the water lines that bust because no one's in there.
I'm just looking at it from a business case perspective. The land value is two hundred and thirty-four thousand and the demolition estimate was in the same.
Everyone has told me that we would get more than two hundred and thirty-four thousand. They have not given me an exact figure, but that's, that's what the, that's the county's assessment on that. One person told me that it was a piece of property in Alexander County that was one acre that sold for six hundred thousand dollars. So there's, there's potential. Everybody tells me there's a lot more potential without the building on it than there is with the building on it.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have any Board of Education Committee reports to share out?
Mr. Robson, one last pitch for the Boosters Club. May twentieth, they'll be doing their five thousand dollar raffle and steak dinner at the high school. So if anybody don't have a ticket and wants one, there's a lot of us with tickets to sale, but it's a huge fundraiser for our athletics program at the high school. That's May twentieth.
If you've never been, it's a very entertaining and fun night also.
Yeah.
While helping raise a lot of money for that program.
And I'd also like to announce that Sports Hall of Fame nominations are being accepted through June the first.
All right. Any other reports? Thank you. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hefner for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. I just want to start by saying Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to everyone involved with instruction of the students in the Alexander County school system. I really enjoy this time of year because we get to specifically celebrate the teachers, counselors, social workers, teacher assistant and teacher assistants and others. And I just want to reiterate, the week this year runs from May eighth through the twelfth, and I would just ask everyone to thank a teacher this week. We should thank them every day, but specifically this week is a special week for them. The second bullet, I wanted to let you know that currently the Sugarloaf Facility project is on schedule for bidding at the end of the month. Plans are in place to have the demolition completed during the summer months when there are no students and fewer staff members in the building. Randy Baker, the architect with Pinnacle, believes that the project is still on schedule to be completed by the end of the summer twenty twenty-four. So in just over a year, we hope, Mr. Mabry's out here in the audience, we hope to have a completed project up at Sugarloaf Elementary School. The third bullet, we had four students last week, Michael Brown, Lily Haney, Sarah Holler, and Macy Johnson compete at the CVCC math competition. Michael placed second in the advanced math individual competition. Lily Haney placed third, and then the team placed first in the overall competition. There were twenty-three high school teams, and we are so proud of these students and the way that they represented Alexander Central High School. Bullet number four, plans are in place for the supplemental funds for teacher compensation, and I wanted to communicate to the teachers how this is going to work during the month of June. The North Carolina General Assembly appropriated funds to eligible LEAs to provide salary supplements to teachers and instructional support personnel. Alexander County Schools received one million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars to cover the cost of the supplement and corresponding benefits. Approximately three hundred fifty-five employees in the school system will be eligible for this bonus. Teachers and instructional support personnel on steps sixteen to twenty-four and then twenty-six and above will each receive four thousand dollars. The remaining funds will be divided equally among the remaining teachers and instructional support personnel, and the estimated amount for each of those individuals will total three thousand dollars. And again, that will be paid in a June voucher. Number five, please mark your calendars. Sugarloaf School's visit for board members has been scheduled for Monday, May fifteenth. I would ask that you plan to meet me and Mr. Mabry in the school's office at eleven thirty. As, as is typical, you're going to be treated to a tour and lunch during the visit. And then my last bullet, I started my day today with fellow superintendents and Governor Cooper, and I'm going on record as saying, I am very concerned about the movement in North Carolina to dismantle public education. Instead of investing in our public schools, legislators are proposing an extreme plan to pour billions of dollars into vouchers for private schools. By expanding voucher eligibility to any K-12 student, no matter how wealthy the family, our public schools will face a steep funding cut at a time of critical teacher and staff shortages. Wealthy families don't need tax dollars to pay tuition at private schools. I want our communities to realize that when funding is taken from our school system to fund vouchers for private schools, the county commissioners must make up the difference or we have to take other measures such as closing schools. Did you all hear me say where we will make up the difference in money? If the county commissioners cannot provide the difference, other measures have to be taken to cut spending, and that means either cutting staff and/or closing community schools. It's a very complex issue that many citizens don't even realize is happening because the increased funding for opportunity scholarships is hidden within the state budget. I have attached to your agenda, and it is for public consumption, showing Senate Bill four oh six and House Bill eight twenty-three, the impact analysis and how school systems across this state will be affected with the proposed opportunity scholarship expansion. The impact of this expansion on public school budgets depends on the percentage of new opportunity scholarship recipients who previously attended public school. The bills direct that at least fifty percent of new scholarship funds must go to schools who qualify for free or reduced-priced lunch. Assuming that fifty percent of new opportunity scholarship recipients would be previous public school students, the Office of State Budget and Management estimates that in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, that year alone, public schools across the state would see a decline in state funding of more than two hundred and three million or one point nine percent of the total state funding that has been given to public schools. The expansion would impact counties differently based on their estimated number of opportunity scholarship enrollees. Under reasonable assumption that fifty percent of new scholarships would go to previous public school students, thirty-one counties would see a three percent or greater decline in total state funding. In the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven alone, North Hampton and Burtie Counties would see an eight percent and a seven percent decline respectively in total state funding for K-12 public education. Eight counties, including Alamance, Craven, Cumberland, Madison, Mitchell, Pamlico, Pasquotank, and Warren, would see a five percent decline in total state funding for K-12 public education. And listen closely, friends and community members, six counties, Alexander, Hurford, Hope, Lee, McDowell, and Onslow would see a four percent decline in total state funding for K-12 public education. And fifteen counties, Buncombe, Durham, Gaston, Harnett, Hyde, Jones, Montgomery, Nash, Richmond, Rutherford, Sampson, Scotland, Washington, Wayne, and Wilson would see a three percent decline in total state funding for K-12 public education. I urge, I plead, I do whatever I need to do, all of Alexander County's Board of Education members, county commissioners, school system employees, and public school supporters to please, please, please contact our legislators in Raleigh and voice your opposition to these bills. And if you need talking points, I have provided them to you in this agenda, and this is for the public, it's for every one of you. Our representative is Jeffrey Elmore. I've included a number and his email as well as Senator Eddie Settle, a number and email. I cannot stress enough how the expansion of these opportunity scholarships will negatively impact public schools. Do you have any questions?
Dr. Hefner, I just want to reiterate exactly what you said at the very end. It is important for our stakeholders to contact and reach out to these individuals and express your opposition to this. Otherwise, what we do is not going to be successful. Now is the time to take a stand and stand for what we believe in. If we truly believe in the public education, we've, we've got to do this. We've got to do this, folks, not only for our kids, but for our grandkids and the furtherance of this. So please, please take this opportunity to do that.
And this is a Jennifer Hefner superintendent comment. There are two entities right now that have absolutely no oversight or accountability, and those two are private schools and home schools. And guess what? They will be the people taking jobs in the county. And if there has been no oversight and no accountability, Dr. Curry drafted a letter today with three instances of children in middle and high school that could not do letter and number recognition and simple reading and arithmetic coming out of some of these settings. And I wouldn't have nearly as much of a beef as I do. And I wouldn't have nearly as much of a beef as I do, but with no oversight and no accountability, I'm sorry, but tax dollars should not go to it. I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the information, and like you said, that is on the public view.
Absolutely, everything that I've just talked about, I have documents that if you need talking points, if you think that you cannot make the argument, I have given you the information that you can use right here in this agenda to tell them why that you would be opposed to such a bill.
Can we make it a little bit easier for our consented community to find the information going right up to the front of the Alexander County School?
Absolutely, Dr. Dalrevis, I want them on our front page, talking points for the two bills that I just mentioned.
And the representatives.
Absolutely, and our representatives, they represent Alexander County, their contact information as well.
Thank you.
I'm really just involved in North Carolina dealings, I don't know. I know that charter schools, there's been a big movement in different states with charter schools, but I've never seen anything like it. A person told me that this was going to happen years ago, and I asked if he had fallen and hit his head. And here I am, seeing it and living it.
Thank you for the information. Just watch closely what's going on with this bill in Raleigh. At this time, I would like to call on Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer for Board of Education Policy Revision Second Read.
We have five policies that are up for second reading tonight. School safety, code of ethics for school members, board member opportunities for development, one hundred percent tobacco-free schools, and community use of facilities. I have no comments or requests for changes, so I ask for approval on second reading.
Well, members, you got the policies in your packet. What's the pleasure of the board for approval on second reading? So, got a motion, Board Member Agüez, second, Board Member McLean. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of policy fifteen ten, four two hundred seventy-two seventy, twenty-one twenty, twenty-one twenty-three, forty-three twenty, and fifty thirty, on second reading, say aye? Aye, any opposed? Those policy changes carry. I'll recognize Ms. Mahaffey, while she's still up here, for additional second reading policies.
Okay, we have two new policies that are up for a second reading tonight. Professional standards of conduct and performance for teachers, and professional standards of conduct and performance for school administrators. I've received no request for revisions in these two policies, and would ask for approval on second reading.
Well, members, what's the pleasure of the board for approval of policy seventy-three oh five and seventy-three oh six?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion, Board Member Agüez, second, oh, sorry, motion by Board Member Agüez, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Board Member Reese, is there any discussion on these policies? If not, all those in favor of approval of policy seventy-three oh five and seventy-three oh six on second reading, say aye? Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey, and I'll recognize you again for Board of Education Policy Revisions First Reading.
We have six policies up for first reading, we'll ask for input and bring those back next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Kevin Britton, our interim Transportation Director, for a presentation of agreement of use of activity buses by Alexander County YMCA.
Members of the board, Dr. Hefner, thank you for having me. You have in your packet tonight an agreement for the use of activity buses without YMCA. There's nothing really changed other than the per mile cost. And I have asked them to increase their liability insurance, which they have agreed to. And at this time, I would like approval for the agreement for the use of activity buses.
There any questions about this? What's the pleasure of the board for the approval of this agreement? Move to approve. Got a motion by Board Member Bowman, second, by Board Member Agüez, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the improvement of the agreement for use of activity buses by Alexander County YMCA, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Britton, I hadn't got to meet you yet, but we do appreciate, I was glad to see you on our agenda, and we do appreciate you helping us out on interim basis.
We're so glad you're here.
Thank you.
And I'll call on Dr. Jennifer Hefner at this time for our Alexander County Virtual Academy final draft.
Thank you Chairman Robinson. It is attached, if somebody would just go ahead and pull it up. This is exactly what I presented during the public hearing last month. The only difference, I have added two slides, and that's at the very end, because I wanted to capture an update or update from what resulted from that public hearing. On the slide, it's updates from public hearing held on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. You see that here I've included parents voicing concerns about the school's closure. There were two of those, Amanda Frye submitted a written statement, it was read by Melinda Glenn, and then Charlene Oliver attended the hearing with her son. Both parents spoke about similar concerns such as their children experiencing social anxiety, peer pressure, bullying, and the fear of being in a public school or a place thinking that something is being said about them. Then the questions from some of you, I captured on the right-hand side of that slide. The questions were, did any of the students talk about going to the early college? And my answer to that was not that I was aware of. How was the Virtual Academy funded? It has been funded with ESAR funds. Will the teachers have positions somewhere else in the system? The answer to that question was yes. Will the operational costs be the same, and would we have to absorb it in the budget? Both of those answers were yes. Are other school systems having the same discussions? Yes, and they are, because the COVID funds will not be available after June twenty twenty-four. And then is there something we can improve upon to make the six students planning to be homeschooled want to return to our system? And I was uncertain about that, I think that you had asked that question, Vice Chairman Agüez. And then this is just my recommendation tonight. Funding to keep the Virtual Academy open has been requested from the county commissioners. You see the amount that was asked for. We have not received a local allocation for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and I would just propose to the board to wait until the June meeting to actually vote on this matter in hopes that we will have a local allocation at that time, and we'll know if we have been given those funds or not. Do you have any questions?
I got one question. I went back, I was unable to, due to traveling with work last month, but I did go back and watch the public hearing. With some of the concerns and some of the transition issues and stuff like that, is some of these students possible, like, could the student success center play a part in any of this? Like, that environment without a, that, great, is that, is that an option? Would some of these students be, would that, a smaller environment?
I don't deny that the environment would probably be better, it would put them a little bit more at ease, but the problem is now, we're full. We have as many in that program right now as the building will allow. So. But it is definitely a smaller setting, more one-on-one with teachers, but space is an issue right now, we just don't have a space for somebody with, that would only have some of those issues. And that's because that facility, we house children with a lot of behavioral issues.
Any other questions? What's the, I guess, I mean, you know, you made the recommendation.
That's just my recommendation.
Is that, is, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move a motion to accept, having a discussion.
Second.
Got a motion, Board Member Agüez, second by Board Member Ryan, to readdress it in June with this further discussion, and if action's taken, then be in June. Any other questions? All those in favors, say aye?
Aye.
Don't matter for June.
Thank you.
At this time, before we do go this next, and I want to go back to, Dr. Hefner's calling about Teacher Appreciation Week, I do want to say thank you to everyone in our school system, and you've mentioned a lot of positions. You know, I was thinking back to some of the people besides classroom teachers that had an influence on me in public schools. I thought about Dewey Elder Del Neil, custodian, bus drivers, everybody's a teacher, whether they carry the title of teacher. And I do hope that they all realize the appreciation and benefit that this board member, and I think this board and the whole has for them. I'm sorry for getting emotional, but they pour a lot into their job.
They do.
And I thank them, and I appreciate them, and I just wanted to add that right quick.
That's right.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I'll take a motion to enter into closed session for, per general statute one four three, three one eight dot eleven A six, to address executive session issues.
Motion to adjourn?
Got a motion, Board Member Reese, second, Board Member McLean. All those in favor of entering into closed session, say aye? All those opposed likewise, so we're in closed session.
Thank you.